Good evening. I'd like to call to order, they Wentworth Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. It is currently 6:00 PM. We are in the DeLeo Senior Center. Call to order, roll call, please.
Counselor Tassanieri.
Here.
Counselor Costigan.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Aiello.
Yeah.
Counselor Swope.
Here.
Counselor DeRoz, Vice President Belcher.
Here.
President Latere.
Yeah.
Please stand for the pledge and continue standing after the pledge. Counselor DiMarco.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one second, please. Town of Wentworth lost a legend this past week with the passing of Coach Bob DiFelice. Bob was 82 years young, along with his wife Pat and children Christine, Kim, Michael, and Nicole. He leaves a legacy that will never be forgotten. Bob's long resume included 17 years as head football coach at Wentworth High School, where he won two Eastern Massachusetts Division II Super Bowl championships. Also included three years of professional baseball in the Red Sox organization. Bob helped establish the Eastern Collegiate Football Conference and was the founder of the Eastern Football Conference, as well as the EFC Commissioner. For over half a century, Bob was an integral part of Bentley University's Athletic Department. He was Bentley's head baseball coach from the program's inception in 1969 and remained in that position for the next 50-plus years. He was the Director of Athletics for over 30 years at Bentley and was named Baseball Coach Emeritus in 2022. Bentley University's current A.D. said this, "The magnitude of Coach DiFelice's influence and leadership on Bentley athletics is a legacy that will never be forgotten. Myself and the entire council echo those sentiments for what Bob did for Wentworth Athletics as well." Our deepest sympathies go out to his wife Pat, as well as Christine, Kim, Michael, Nicole, and the rest of the DiFelice family. I ask everyone for a moment of silence, please. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is that the Town Council appropriate $1.1 million to pay to replace water meters, exercise water valves. Public hearing is open. We have Director Cala here. I will ask Director Cala just to give us an update on this.
(inaudible) five-year capital plan. He asked for valve exercising, valve replacement, and water meter replacement. This motion is $1.1 million. First year of that five-year capital request, we have a thousand for valve exercising, 500,000 valve replacement, we have a thousand for water meters. Water meters are, I mean, it's our revenue source. It's, you know, they have an age. It's been over 10 years since our, actually 13 years if you've got to replace them. If you replaced them last time, we'd be going after our water meters first, which is the bigger complexes, the higher volumes of the cows, then we'd replace them at 10 meters. And this will be a 10 to 15-year cycle.
Thank you. Any questions on the council? Counselor Swope.
Steve, are there any additional funding sources from the state? I understand that the state is very concerned about not only water meters but pipes and et cetera, et cetera. So maybe I'm overstepping because this is just about the meters, et cetera. But is there any additional funding you think we are going to be eligible for in the future on this issue?
Water meters, I mean, the water meters are more important to us than the state if the revenue source for all municipalities.
Right.
They're concerned as with lead pipe and water meter rehabilitation. So we will be eligible again and keep out the 28 for the water meter replacement. But no, not the water meters.
Okay, thank you, sir.
At least it's patriotic.
It's patriotic, but it's annoying.
Thank you, Director Cala, and thank you for putting this in front of us again as a public hearing. When you say revenue source, I was always under the impression that water was basically, the water rates were basically to cover the costs. But you're saying it's a revenue source for most municipalities. Can you explain to what degree that is?
It's a revenue source for the enterprise, which should be operated by the maintenance and utilities.
And is it the goal is to break even or to make money?
Yeah, it's a money-making fund.
Okay, so revenue is to offset expenses, not to make profit? Gotcha. All right, thank you.
I think with the new meters also, as meters age, they do not take as accurate readings. So we're getting charged for water that might not be being charged for. Any questions from the public? Karen.
Mine is a comment and a question. And I asked Superintendent Cala this question, and he really couldn't answer me. I know with the last go-around, there were meters that were unable to be changed, for whatever reason. People went up in the house or whatever. My question is, would those meters be the number one priority before we go to meters that have to change?
Director Cala.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we want to work on all these meters, of course, anything that we're able to change, we classify as the oldest thing in the meter. So absolutely. Going after the larger meters before that, that's what this first initial phase is for. Problem with the larger meters is they were the first ones to be put in, and they all have batteries. The battery's failing, so we'll come up with a point where we get an estimated billing, which none of us want, but we're going after it right now. The thing is, as we just referred to, they're still reading, albeit slower and certainly at a loss, I'm sure, but compared to the larger account users and estimated billing, that's the priority of the current rate.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll close that public hearing. We'll open up a second public hearing to appropriate $980,000 to pay the cost of replacing lead line water service. Public hearing is open. Again, I will ask Director Cala just to give a brief statement.
Sure. So this is a lead line replacement between water racks mandated by PEP to replace the minimum of seven percent of your identified lead services. This money is allowing us to replace 100 services with the last six contract. You still have just under 600 full lead or partial lead services identified in the system. So that's what this contract will do, it'll remove another 100 of those services.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Swope.
I guess my same question. Again, Steve, I just heard that at least in central Massachusetts, the state, the Commonwealth is willing to put in more money for that. And I don't know if we can't do it faster, if they give us more money for the pipes and more money for the support. I guess you're trying everything you can to do that, but it's just...
MWRA, where you utilize a 0% loan for 10 years, which is a great deal, borrowing 0%. What the state's doing right now is they're giving us lead line inventory money. Not replacement money, but helping communities identify the lead in their systems. We're a little bit ahead of that curve. We've identified ours. But we are utilizing that money to do GIS mapping of our system.
Right.
Making our payment logs electronic. So we are utilizing the funds, but they're not giving us money, the state's not giving money to replace. MWRA has given us the program for 0%.
Yeah, thanks.
Counselor Costigan.
Yes, question for the director and maybe even the manager here. I believe the Biden administration has passed some type of lead line replacement legislation. Is there any chance that the town of Wentworth gets any credit from the feds as it relates to having to borrow the money from the empty area as opposed to federal monies? Do you have any answer? I know it was passed just recently. It's pretty new.
I don't have any from that. Certainly looked into it, but I don't have any.
Thank you, Director.
Any questions from the public? Seeing that, we will close the public hearing. Public comment. Mr. Dowd.
I'm going to pass out a picture because my state, pictures worth a thousand words. I want everybody to have a picture so they can see what I'm talking about. I will ask this picture to be put in in the minutes. Is this working?
Yes.
Like I said, the crystal, a picture is worth a thousand words. Is this type of preparation for a town council meeting helpful? A teacup, a police badge? Is it lawful for ILO to be wearing a police badge? I think someone should look at the law, apply that law to ILO. I always seem to have an intimate relationship with the MDT as shown and proudly displayed a teacup at previous town council meetings. He should accuse himself of all matters concerning 3A. ILO has spoken about his lack of involvement with anything as far as helping the town of Wentworth become a better place. He wants to be the person who talks the most at these town council meetings. ILO was on the Intergovernmental Strategy Committee, the most important committee that involves litigation of money dispersed by mass water and the mass water resources. He should be taken off this committee. Who can trust him? Many townspeople have asked ILO to resign. This includes many prominent business people and town officials. The time he leaves his house to come to the town hall involves dancing and gesticulating in preparation for his performance for the town council show. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just for the record, the T-shirts that were worn at that town council meeting were purchased by the councilors, and they were reflecting something in the record. Thank you.
Many times, I've asked you not to comment.
The councilors purchased T-shirts to support autism awareness.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Yes, John?
Hi, John Morgan, precinct four. Today is White Queen Day. And it was 60 years ago that President Johnson made a proclamation made on White Queen Day in 1964. I'll just give you some brief history. Back in 1964, you were considered blind and had a cabin, you just saw a formal indication, you were considered insignificant value and were shipped away to, I'm sorry, to an institute. This happened to my father. Fortunately, because my father had three children at the time, he was able to avoid that situation, but so many others weren't as lucky. Now, let's fast forward 60 years. In 1990, the American, I'm so sorry, I'm just so...
No problem, John. Take your time.
In, all right, I'll get it. In 1990, the American Disabilities Act was passed, which made significant changes in different people with all disabilities, not just one. Even this afternoon, I was just walking down the street, and I was asked some, some what I thought were very hard questions. And I don't want to repeat them at this time because I still, yeah, I still have to absorb. All right, just to let you know, the White Queen Day is important to the blind, but it's also significant as a stepping stone for other disabilities. And I'm shaking so much I have to sit down. I'm very sorry.
Thank you very much, John. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Schmidt.
Bill Schmidt, precinct five. I believe the fire station survey ends Friday.
I believe so, yeah. I think that's the date. I have to double check, but yeah.
Bridge people who haven't told out the survey, you do so if you want to. I, personally, I just basketball, of course, is the best site. It's a better site. It's more cost efficient, et cetera, but it'd be great if people bought it. Second, you should have gone to talk about quality, because I know you had a moment of science for it. Initially, we had my 55th class reunion, and I don't know if it was my junior or senior, but I remember Bob was my gym coach. I wasn't a big athlete, but he played tennis, but I was involved in a lot of things in the school. Did well, spoke in graduation, and there weren't a lot of awards back then, but I was awarded the belt award, which is given to basically a pretty good all-around person in life. I remember something, after that, Bob, you please, came up to me, pure red, which really was a thing, because he was like the big man on campus. It was something I remember from the state, I think it was your 50th birthday, right? I hope the town will find appropriate memorial for Bob in the field, because I think he did give so much to this town. And it wasn't just in athletics, but he helped a lot of other people as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Baba.
Barbara Flock, precinct four. I understand that there is a big struggle based on 3A.
If, Baba, I'm sorry, can you just go to the microphone for the C A T also?
I'm Jim and Marjorie on W G D H today. The Attorney, the Attorney General Campbell was on, and she talked briefly about 3A. Now, I understand she didn't have her own issues, and I didn't have enough guts to comment and question her, but I understand that there is some kind of variant or exception or something where we could file it and prove that we should be exempt from this, and I was wondering why we wouldn't file that.
Thank you. Yes.
Marcy Hamilton, precinct two.
If you could just move to the microphone, Marcy, thank you.
Marcy Hamilton, precinct two. I was watching the meeting two weeks ago, and I was so moved by the people on North Street that came to talk about their flooding issues. And I know that there's a lot going on in the town, and I just want, and I hope that the board moves forward with whatever monies that we have and grants that we might fly for and keep the flooding issues in all those impacted areas moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Correspondents, Denise?
We had one letter from S. O. O. Wright, a long letter, and all in all, he just wants everyone just to get along with 3A in the town, and hoping that we do.
Thank you. Committee reports. Finance?
I can give the update for Counsel DeRoz. Finance met last Thursday. We went over the two motions that we discussed during the public hearing today. Both came out of committee with positive recommendations.
Thank you very much. Public works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on public works, and it was helpful to, first of all, hear the Summit Avenue group that has filed a suit, filed a request that we move that walkway to a private walkway between Summit down to the next street. The committee decided that it would be better to think about all of these when we think about the walkways of Wentworth, and there are 12 of them. And thanks to Steve Cala, he has listed those, and we have an idea of now what they are. Our next goal is to figure out, first of all, what needs to be done to maintain those walkways, what we can do, what we can't do. And I have also talked to the police about what the problems are on those walkways. So we will have a better idea of whether there are, as the group at 67 Summit claims, there's a lot of drug use, et cetera. So I need a police report on that. The other thing that they have suggested is that there's many more cars parking on those streets, which then keep them from parking near their home. And the thought is that perhaps those homes that were single-family homes have become two-family homes, or three-family homes, or four-family homes. I do not have a report on the variances that have been allowed on those streets, but this is an ongoing issue, which I've asked the council to address, and I would like to understand better the variances that we offer and what we can do to make sure that we're not giving so many variances that people can't park, can't, and the streets are crowded, as well as the claim that on Summit Avenue that they can't park even in front of their homes. So I will follow up on that, and I will let you know in the future. We'll have another meeting on that as soon as I get the data from both the police, as well as understanding some of the variances that we've been offering from the planning board and the, et cetera.
So just for clarification, on the question at hand, the release and abandonment of the certain right of way, did you have a recommendation out of committee?
No, because we don't have the data yet.
Okay.
I will, once we get the data, we will have another meeting and try to make a decision on that, but also thinking about these as a whole, not just one variance. We had a wonderful letter, just as an aside, from Jay Collins, who talked about all the pathways that we have in Wentworth and how kids could actually travel safely to schools if they use these pathways, not just the roads that are now crowded and are, you know, considered dangerous at some intersection. So there's a lot to consider here, not just, not just one, but the entire group as a whole. So I'll get back to you, President Latere, and we will have another meeting on this.
Thank you. School department report. School department met a week ago yesterday. Discussion again was concentrated around the override, and the members of the school committee, along with Superintendent Howard, will participate in virtual town hall sessions starting tomorrow night, Wednesday, and continuing the following two Wednesdays after that. So the next three Wednesdays, beginning tomorrow, the 16th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. If you go on the Wentworth Town website, on the calendar, there is a link. These are virtual meetings through a Zoom. The school committee is also having a special meeting on Monday, October 21st, at 6:00 PM, focused solely on the override. We also had a guest at the school committee meeting, Amelia Spencer, who was the senior class president, as well as student council president. She was our guest at school committee, and she gave us an update on all the ongoings at the high school. She gave a great presentation discussing academic, social, and athletic happenings at Wentworth High School. She was just incredibly well-spoken and so articulate, it's just marvelous. She's a marvelous representation of Wentworth High School. A couple of meetings from now, we will also be having the junior class president come in and do the same. So it is great to see the students come in and participate in town government, to get more involved, and to keep us abreast of what's going on. So thank you, Amelia. Town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. An update on the electric aggregation for the town. Good Energy opened the bids today for the, all the distributors to the rates. I'm happy to say I don't have the final rates in front of me, but we'll have those shortly. But they were, Direct Energy was the low bidder, and they came in at, on average, 3 cents cheaper than National Grid is currently. So once we go to this program, as remember, it's an opt-out program. People will be placed in the mid-range with, for anyone remembers, it's basically the base rate with a 10% green component to it. There's two other options. You can opt into the, just the base rate without any sort of a green component, meaning green energy sources, non-fossil fuel sources. And then there's another higher option, which would be, you know, the basic rate plus 100%, you know, option. Those three rates we put out there, there'll be a lot more literature to come forward about this. We'll be letting all the residents know about it, but also we're shooting for January 2025, beginning of the year, to kick this off and have it start. For the residents, it'll be seamless. If anybody doesn't want to opt out of it, they'll just see Direct Energy listed on their bill instead of National Grid, and it'll be a cheaper kilowatt hour, so it'll be a saving. So thank you for them for doing that hard work. So we're getting ready to move forward on that. Keeping with that theme, we were able to, it was in the Green Communities Act this year and on the capital plan, but we were able to purchase our first electric vehicle in Wentworth, 2024 Chevy Blazer. That'll be used by the Inspection Services Department. I did drive it for a few days just to check it out, make sure there aren't quirks with it. And the council president took a, torn it as well. It's a nice vehicle. You know, we set up a charge point over at the DPW garage with a 240 plug, so they'll be able to charge it there on the weekends, and it's, you know, we're a step in the right direction. Finishing up the, or starting conducting rather of the assistant town manager interviews this week, we've got five interviews scheduled for first round interviews, and then we'll pick the two or three finalists and conduct the second interviews hopefully next week. Euro Beach update. We do have the draft plan on the website. That was requested by the owners, and we promised to get it up there. It was a little late. We thought we'd have it up by Friday, but it went up today. So that is up on the website. We are initially proposing to do October 19th for a meeting. Unfortunately, the association meeting house out there isn't available on that Saturday, so I'm waiting for a call back to book another date, and I'll make sure I get that information out on the website and to the residents. We have an email list set up with all the Euro Beach attendees that came to the last meeting, so we'll make sure we update everybody as to when that meeting's going to be. Fire station floor update. We're still waiting on the final plan to come through, but we did make some progress. We were able to relocate temporarily the high-water vehicle out of the DPW garage and put one of our engines over there, the one we don't use all the time. So we're basically able to take half the weight off the floor and then move the engine to the other side. So we are getting ready, and hopefully we'll have some final numbers this winter. We're looking for a spring start on that project. And with that, I will... And with that, I will, let me take questions.
Any questions on the town manager's specific report? We'll start with Council Tassinari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Manager, do you have an update on the federal grants? I know we were applying for a while back for the Girdleson-Tilson flooding areas. Has anything moved forward with those or is that still, standing still at the federal level?
It's still in the FY, you know, 25 budget season that we're in now. They haven't, the federal government hasn't approved their budget yet, so it's still stuck in there. Once we, you know, get out of, once they get that budget approved, hopefully that'll be one of the projects that come out of there, but we haven't received any update yet. I did check last week.
Thank you. And then just as a quick follow-up to that, it might be helpful to the council to have a quick primer from you sometime on how federal funds work, because just because we pass a bill at the federal level doesn't mean that money actually gets, becomes available until it gets appropriated and then it trickles down through the agency. So it's a long lead time before it actually gets, before it becomes even available to apply for, not just by the time it arrives at our door.
Right.
It could be three years.
And a lot of time, it's not direct to the town either. It's usually, sometimes it's a state pass-through, you know, so it'll go, the state will take the money and give it up to different agencies that they feel is appropriate based on the source of the funds and then you apply through those programs. Similar, they did with the, some of the ARPA funds when they did the water main stuff and things like that. They give it to different programs, so.
So a little, a little like timeline or whatever you could share with us would be helpful. Thank you.
Council Costigan, anything?
Not at this moment, no, sir.
Okay. Council Munson.
Thank you, Tony, for the town manager report. Couple of questions. If you could update any of the follow-up stuff regarding Morton Street in terms of the gate that was, we were discussing at the last meeting and then if there was any progress on finding some of those, you know, the valves that are kind of buried. And then I have a couple of subsequent questions.
With regard to Morton, we'll have more information at the next meeting. Director Calla did find a lot of those, but we're working on some pricing. I know we promised by the end of the month, so on the 29th meeting, we'll have more of an update on that. With regard to the gate closing, we did put an order out through the PD to close it at night. You know, the first night we did it, of course, somebody decides to go out on their own and open it at 6:30 in the morning after we had closed it the night before, but it was supposed to open at 7:00 anyway for the construction work out on, you know, Revere Street. So not the end of the world, but we're trying to, you know, keep a closer eye on that and make sure it's closed when it's not in use, so.
Appreciate that. In terms of the climate committee that was formed, have they met and have, is there any kind of activity underway?
They have been meeting. I know Council Costigan and Council DeRozan are on there. We did have a brief sub-meeting with a couple of the members today just to talk about the, you know, laying out the schedule on a large spreadsheet and sort of next steps. I'm talking about, you know, the next time we get to apply for an MVP application, other projects that are out there, potential funding sources and whatnot, so. In looking at some local colleges for some potential studies and things like that, so I'll let, you know, Council DeRozan will probably be at the next meeting and can, you know, can give an update on that.
Okay. And then as far as, two last things and then I'll pass the baton, but as far as the, I guess one of the questions I had was, last time we were here, last time we were speaking, we talked about the sandbags and having a volunteer event where people can chip in and try to help create those bags for the Morton Street crowd, et cetera, et cetera. Is that still happening and if there is, is there a date? And I'd like to be involved with that.
Absolutely. No date yet, but more to follow on that. We're just waiting on the final pricing of it and the delivery date. We're stuck ordering an entire truckload of them, so it's more bags than I anticipated buying, so we're trying to make a plan for the rest of the bags and whatnot, so that's where we're at with that.
And then the Green Communities Act, what is that car being used for and was there any other money that was, what was the, what was the money used for and what does the car use for?
Cars in Inspection Services Department. They have multiple inspectors over there. They go out, whether it's, you know, trash department, ISD for inspection services, restaurant inspections, et cetera, just having another vehicle available to them to use so they, you know, go out and do their inspections during the day.
So was that grant that was given to us primarily for that electric vehicle?
Yep, and plus some town funds. We had money allotted in the capital plan as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Regarding the Euro Beach meeting, I know you're working on scheduling that, but if we could see if we could also get it on Zoom or live broadcast on C A T, that would be great too, especially if we're looking at like a weeknight thing, just so more people are able to.
Yeah, it's just going to be the size of the room. I don't know if, it'd be tough to have, I mean, based on the last attendance of, you know, 60 or 70 people, it's, you can't have that really in the Harvey hearing room, so, you know, live on WCAT, but we can certainly record it. I don't know if we can get it up live.
Whatever we can do to make it accessible to more people.
Okay.
And just a reminder to everybody to look at the draft plan and send in questions ahead of time so we can make sure they're all tackled at the meeting.
Thank you. Council DeMarco?
Real quick, so March 17th is known as St. Patrick's Day, which is celebration of Irish heritage. Yesterday was Columbus Day, which is a celebration of Italian heritage. I know some people call it Indigenous Peoples' Day now, but in Winthrop, it's still Columbus Day. So I don't know what happened. The first thing that I learned in kindergarten was about the Nina, the Pinta, and the Santa Maria. Okay? And for some reason, even though he died 600 years ago, Christopher Columbus did something wrong in the last 20 years. I have no idea what it is. You don't have to like Christopher Columbus, okay? Call it Italian Heritage Day if you want, okay? But don't take away the Italians' Day. That's all I got.
Council Ayello?
Nothing for me. Council Swob.
I have a question, Tony, and this may be deemed out of order, but I understand that, as Barbara mentioned, that there's an exemption in Superior Court. Why wouldn't we sign off on that as a town council?
I'm, there's no exemption that's listed in the 3A Act or in the guidelines, so I'm not sure if there's a chance to try to get that. That's fine, but I don't.
Yeah, it's in Superior Court, as I understand it.
Okay. I'll look into it, but I mean, we've dealt with some other issues in the court recently. I haven't seen that.
If we could actually be exempt from 3A, I think that would be great. I mean, I don't know if that is going to happen or if that's going to go through, but I certainly wouldn't want to ignore it if it's a possibility for Winthrop, given our situation, because we are unique in so many ways, so thank you.
And I don't think we've ignored it, Suzanne. I think we've, you know, I've stated in prior meetings that we're trying to hire somebody to do that multifamily certification for us to see if we're eligible for the exemption for 40B. And should an exemption be made available through the 3A, certainly we could make that argument, but we need to certify the number of multifamilies we have here to see what our actual density is and I'm working on getting some pricing for that. So we're not ignoring it. We're just working on making, find out the density exemption. Find out what our density is.
And sorry, can you say, I'm sorry, one more time, just for my ears. So tell me again about what you're doing.
As I stated prior in prior meetings, we were made aware of the 40B exemption with regard to density of multifamily housing. That was, others in this town years ago had made the argument, but it was never a certified list. So in order to get that exemption, you need to have a certified list done by an engineer that's, you know, certified for that. It was done for one other community, the Medford or Malden, and they were able to get it, but MAPC doesn't do that anymore, so we have to hire an additional consultant, somebody to come in and do that certification. I did ask our consultant that's doing the 3A, but they don't do that work and, you know, they were looking to get a few names so we can see if we can get somebody to do that work, but until we know what our density is and actually certify it, regardless of what happens with either 40B or 3A, like we need to know what that number is so we can see if we qualify.
And you're doing that, right?
I'm working, yeah, we haven't got the pricing back yet, but I'm working on it. Then I'll bring it before the council for consideration.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Tony.
Mr. President, can I, can I ask a couple of questions, please?
Please.
Thank you. Sorry about that. As far as the firehouse, town manager, has there been any consideration for steel beam construction underneath that floor that would give us the ability to keep the boiler in there temporarily?
Yeah, we looked at that, but the cost was going to be too prohibitive versus what we're proposing with the filling in.
The current cost is $1 million to repair?
We don't know yet. I'm just, the only pricing I have is what Chelsea did, but we have to get the final plan before we get pricing. That 800,000 or 900,000 is what Chelsea paid. I'm not sure what level or, you know, what degree that entailed, so I have to, but that's the only number I have to go off of right now.
Okay. And just to piggyback off of Council Swob's comments regarding the exemption, my name is on that second submittal for the exemption, along with Mr. DeMarco as well, Council DeMarco. I proudly put my name on that exemption. I don't think 3A fits the town, as I've been saying all along, and I'll continue to hold my stance on that, including the no on 3A. So just to be clear, I have not waived it. That is how I feel. I am, Winthrop through and through, and I'm going to leave it at that. Thirdly, the Morton Street flooding. I know we're talking a lot of money here, 12 to 18 million dollars with some proposals by the Woods Hole, Mr. Connor. With regards to a temporary fix, I did some soul searching and with the two hurricanes down in Florida and all of the heightened flooding that's been going on, there is a company that I think this town should really look into. It is Aquadam. I don't know if anyone's looked into that. It is relatively cheap and I think for $50,000, we can, we might be able to solve at least temporarily the flooding on Morton Street. Again, I'm not a structural engineer, but with regards to the Aquadam site and just YouTube it, it's simple and it's relatively quick to put up. It will take out of the equation the need to sandbag. This is a two-passion system of bladder, bladders that side by side fill with water and counterbalance each other and are very, very stable. We can get this in a two, three, six-foot height and relatively cheap, save a tremendous amount of person power and I think at least temporarily solve the Morton Street flooding issue. This is flexible. It can be contoured to the front of the houses down on Morton Street as well. It's amazing. Just go online, YouTube it, and I was going to bring this up at our CAC meeting along with CZA chair here, but since it's been mentioned tonight, I think it's important to maybe get ahead of the curve and look into this, this structured Aquadam. Again, price-wise and, you know, labor-intensive, it is not. So just, just my comments there. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Council Costigan, you said Aquadam?
Aquadam.
Okay.
A Q U A dam. Yes, yes. And I think, just add to that, I think in looking at the way it's set up and looking at the overall structure, our fire department, along with our DPW Director Calla, I think can easily manipulate that to do what it has to do. So again, just, I think it'd be worth looking into.
Thank you. And I'll take this minute before we move on to next item of business under public relations. We're going to talk about voting. I just want to talk about the election for a second now. Early voting begins on October 19th. Town hall business hours, including Saturday, October 19th and Saturday, October 26th. Just to give people a brief look at what the ballots, and only because it's so long, there are front and back and then an additional sheet, a second sheet. So the front has all the basic voting. The back of the first page has questions two, three, and four from the state. The second page has question five from the state and then the last question, which is only two lines, is the override question. So just make sure you read the ballot completely, take a look at all questions and just be aware that it's a very long ballot.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was wondering why, and perhaps you know this, why the school committee or the schools did not have a Winthrop representative on that ballot?
Well, that's not, the school committee has nothing to do with that. No, I understand that, but that's a representative. That's, if somebody put in papers to put up beyond the ballot, nobody did. So it could be a write-in campaign for somebody to be, the representative to the vocational school is from the town, so it's not from the schools, right?
Right. It just says there's no one as a representative.
There's no one representative, right. Someone could put in a write-in campaign if they chose to and if not, we're going to look into it and see, it might come down to the council appointing someone.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
That would be a shame if we didn't do that.
It would be a shame. I totally agree. CDICR has not had a meeting and policy committees have not met, I don't believe, Denise. Correct. Old business, the first motion, there's a motion coming out that the town appropriate the sum of $1,100,000 to pay costs to replace water meters, exercise water valves and replace water valves as necessary to the town's water system, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and to raise this appropriation by authorizing the treasurer with the approval of the town manager to issue bonds or serial notes under the supervision of Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, as amended to or to take any other action relative thereto. I believe this came out of committee with positive recommendation. Any discussion, any further discussion on this motion? Council Tassinari?
I would just like to thank Director Calla for spending two hours last week with us. It was very helpful. Everything you had to share with us was very helpful on, on getting that positive recommendation for these two items and I really appreciate your time and your knowledge and it's just, thank you.
You. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Kind of to echo what Council Tassinari said, I wanted to commend Director Calla for being proactive in these types of projects. They do result in slight increases to the water rate. This is where debt related to water and sewer infrastructure go, but taking care of these things now is astronomically more cost-effective than waiting for things to go wrong. So just thank you to Director Calla and the DPW.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing that, roll call, please.
Council Tassinari?
Yes.
Council Costigan?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Ayello?
Yes.
Council Swob?
Yes.
Council DeRozan?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Motion is passed. Next motion, that the town appropriate the sum of $980,000 to pay the cost of replacing lead water lines, service lines, including all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow a set amount under pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 8, Paragraph 5, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes to the town thereof, that the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all or portion of such amounts from the Massachusetts Water Association and in connection thereto, to enter into a loan agreement and/or a financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with such respect to such loan and for any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that the town manager is authorized to accept and expend any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, provided that the amount of the authorizing borrowing for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or aid received, that town manager is authorized to take any other action relatively thereto or convenient to carry out this project. This also comes out of committee with positive recommendation. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Council Tassinari?
Yes.
Council Costigan?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Ayello?
Yes.
Council Swob?
Yes.
Council DeRozan?
Vice President Belcher? Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Motion passed. Release and abandonment of certain right of way. Per Council Swob, we will keep this in committee and we hope to hear back from them in short order. New business, there are two motions that are going to be transferred. The first motion is that there's a request, the town council vote to transfer $400 from the town council reserve line to the library materials line. Town manager, can you give us anything on that? That's something that we can vote on now potentially.
What was, I'm sorry, I was looking at something.
There's a motion from the library for...
Oh, yeah, no, we need to just send that to finance and then we can give it a more discussion. Basically, the library has a budget and every year it has to go up by a certain percentage to keep their certification with the state dismissed by $400, so we just need to adjust the budget and take out another line item to make sure the budget's increased appropriately. That's all. So, but we shouldn't send it to finance just so we can, you know, adjust it at the next meeting.
Okay. We refer that to finance then. There's also a request, the town vote to authorize the original amount of the PRV station project voted on June 21st, '22 to be amended by an addition, I don't think it's an additional amount. I thought it was up to.
No, it's an additional amount.
That's not an additional amount of 2.1. I think the original authorization was 1.6 and change and it's going to 2.1.
Yeah, it's 500,000 increase ballpark.
Right. Right, it's not increasing by 2.1, yeah. That will also be referred to finance. Public comment. Percy Hamilton. Massey?
One more. I would just like to request that when the council or the committee debates with the NWA already and the Mass Court, I would like them to negotiate to include that these entities donate 20 trees each on Tylenol Road. Again, they're cutting down two trees that need to be cut down. They are, you know, they need to be cut down, but I was talking to somebody on the tree committee, and they said they don't have the funds to replant in a Tylenol way. So I thought when you meet with these entities, maybe a negotiation can come up with a donation to the town for trees. I know we're planting trees on our, on our major streets, but it would be helpful on Tylenol Road if, and I'm sure many other streets, that if the entities would be so gracious to donate trees to help with our climate and shade. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd.
Jack Dowd, precinct one. Just for the record, it is unlawful to wear a police badge. Look up the law. I always find the greatest meeting is unacceptable. Swearing, it's, taking over meetings, hijacking meetings, whatever you want to call it. We've got enough of this. Mr. Costigan, Council Costigan, I have also looked up many of the things that you're aware of, and hopefully I can attend the next meeting. Are you on that committee that is investigating this water rise?
You referring to the climate committee?
Climate committee, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, so hopefully I can attend it. I'm talking very briefly, tied in, and hopefully I think that would be, I want to say that. The only person I'm seeing wearing this shirt as a police insignia is Mr. Ayello. That's just my observation. I've never seen anybody else's. It's not acceptable. That's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One more comment. I have a more important comment, if I could.
Yes.
Sorry, I stepped away. Mr. Ayello.
Council Ayello.
Ayello should resign tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Schmidt.
Just wanted to call up on this area.
If we could just get to the mic for CAT.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Just to follow on the findings, there's no doubt that the particles from Mass Court has a direct effect on pollution, so I think it would be a great idea, particularly, maybe not with the MWA, particularly with the Mass Court, have a comprehensive.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Any other public comment? Public relation, upcoming events. Just to clarify, I had said that the high school will be holding virtual town hall meetings starting tomorrow night. Tomorrow night's meeting will be 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The following two Wednesdays after that will be 7:00 to 8:00. So tomorrow night's town, virtual town forum will be from 6:00 to 7:00. Again, go to the Winthrop website, scroll down to the calendar, and you could click on the link to get on the Zoom. Participating, I believe, in tomorrow night's meeting will be the superintendent, Lisa Howard, also school committee member Jen Powell, and also school committee member Gus Martucci, and I believe Susan, school committee member Julie Barry. So I encourage you to attend, ask questions, again, be informed. However you vote, vote informed on whatever issue it happens to be. Also, again, early voting starts October 19th. We'll thank in advance the town clerk's office and her staff for all the work that they're going to be putting into this. We're expecting somewhere upwards of 9,000 votes being cast in the town of Winthrop. So be patient, but take advantage of the early voting. October 23rd will be the Winthrop Planning Board's public hearing regarding the MBTA 3A zoning petition submitted by the Winthrop Says No to 3A Committee, seeking to amend the Town of Winthrop Zoning Ordinances, Section 17, by adding proposed Section 17.04.060. On October 29th, the town council will conduct its public hearing on the same MBTA 3A zoning petition submitted by Winthrop Says No to 3A Committee. We will recess for five minutes after we adjourn this meeting, and at 7:00, we will have the fall forum. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Councilor DiMarco. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those no, the ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.